So happy to see a lot of people here tonight. Speakers will be given three minutes to speak. Please be courteous and try to stop at three minutes because we have maybe nine, I think, this period?
I believe there are ten.
Okay. It will be the rezoning application for Valley Health, Ms. Berry.
Council's requested to affirm on its first reading that any zoning applications submitted by Valley Engineering on behalf of Valley Health for the additional rezoning of approximately 147 acres for the future site of the hospital, medical office, and accessory uses. The property is presently zoned both in S and D. The application proposes to change all of the applicant's property to the McShoots Campus Development District. The submission does include a concept plan with two pages of development. First page includes a replacement hospital, a medical office facility, health care, and so forth. The second page includes completion of the hospital in progress. Page two, medical office building and associated site improvements. Mr. Mayor, would you like to open and we'll call the first speaker?
This meeting is now over. Ms. Berry, will you please call the first citizen?
I'm going to have to excuse some of the names, but I can't read everything in front of me. I believe it's Greg. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, sir.
Please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Greg Bodo, that's B-O-D-O-H, 235 Bates Drive, Monroe. My name is Greg Bodo, I'm a Front Royal homeowner and business owner, here to address the request submitted by Valley Health, number eight in our agenda packet. I'd like to draw the council's attention to the impact statement that was submitted as part of this application. The document begins by quoting Front Royal Code, code that requires applicants to identify the project's impact and to propose ways in which that impact may be mitigated. I think you would agree with me that the intent of this requirement is not to provide the applicant an opportunity to promote their project, to sell or to spin, or otherwise gloss over real issues associated with this plan, but to present the town an authentic impact analysis and an effective remediation plan. I'd like to draw your attention to section B of this document, impacts to the quality of life of citizens. The first sentence, "Any impact to the citizens of the town of Front Royal and the surrounding area can only be seen as a positive improvement." Further down, "The new facility will also allow for additional clinical service offerings." Sounds great, there's no negative impacts whatsoever. New services on the horizon. This is the impact statement submitted to you as mandated by Town Code by Valley Health as a required component of the rezoning application. This document fails to mention that Valley Health has decided not to include maternal labor and delivery unit in this new hospital, despite offering these services to our community for decades. I assure you, closing this unit will have consequences for our community, including the ability to attract new businesses, the ability to recruit talent to our existing businesses, such as my own, and especially the ability to address the needs of the less fortunate in this community. A good place to have begun a real impact study would be to correctly identify the number of babies born in this area, the area served by the hospital. Valley Health has been vocal with the number, 332, or an average one baby, less than one baby per day. Based on that number, Valley Health says they cannot afford to continue providing these services to our community, but we have to ask where did this number come from? It is not the number of new babies in our community each year. The state of Virginia tells us that three to four times that number of babies are born to families in Warren County and the surrounding counties that Valley Health defines as "our community." The babies are not the problem. Valley Health has successfully framed the discussion around their own revenue issues rather than the needs of our community. They have a marketing issue, a customer retention issue, that needs to be addressed. The fact is, Warren Memorial has a high rate of outmigration. Families in our community who lack confidence in the hospital go elsewhere for care. But rather than use a new hospital as an opportunity to restore faith in their services and bring those customers back, Valley Health has decided to use it as an opportunity to improve their bottom line by dropping less profitable services. Now, I look at this rezoning request and see a lot of time and effort by town personnel and council members. And here are town officials saying that this is not the appropriate time or place to raise this issue. Infrastructure's been laid, properties have been negotiated, we can't tell Valley Health how to do their business. Please, this may be our only chance to compel Valley Health to come to the table for a real constructive discussion. We ask that you enforce Town Code, uphold the integrity of this rezoning process, reject this impact statement as inadequate, and postpone this zoning request. And to Valley Health, the citizens of Front Royal sincerely appreciate your investment in our community. Come to the table for an honest discussion of impacts and possible solutions. Let's work together to find a tangible solution that will undermine our efforts to bring new businesses to Front Royal, tangible solutions for those less fortunate citizens of Front Royal who will be impacted the most by this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berry?
Melanie Filenci.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Melanie Saylorn, 95, Moore Drive.
Thank you.
Hello, I am the co-founder of Birth Local. I am here today to talk about what the concerns we have about the closing of the labor and delivery unit. Valley Health has systematically closed down all of their labor and delivery units to funnel births into Winchester. We have found this shift to place profits ahead of patients is a national trend. This is causing a 64% increase in the maternal mortality rate. A couple weeks ago, we had the opportunity to meet with Valley Health administrators and our concerns were not addressed. I asked Valley Health specifically why they feel the national statistics do not apply to them. They had no answer. I could go on and on about the dangers disclosure creates for women and children, but seeing as this is a meeting to address zoning, today my focus would be on how Valley Health's decision can negatively impact our community in other ways. Valley Health states on their zoning application that they wish to build a "replacement hospital" and that "this facility will improve the services offered to the citizens and therefore improve their quality of life." This is not true for citizens who are women and children. I object to their wording. They are not replacing the services offered. They are cherry picking the most lucrative services to provide and are casting the community's needs to the wayside. They say the numbers don't support the need for labor and delivery, but the Virginia Department of Health Statistics show a nearly 400% increase in births in Warren County over the last 20 years. U.S. Census data shows that despite a decline in the number of women of childbearing years, the actual birth rate is increasing. This means the women who are having babies are having more babies. Babies are the future of this town. These statistics negate the reasons Valley Health gives for closing labor and delivery. Valley Health states in their application that "as of any development, property values have to be considered." They state that land values will only increase based upon market demand to be associated with this new hospital. Again, I disagree. We have found literature that explains the cascade of negative impacts to a community once labor and delivery closes. Specifically, "The community becomes what is known as a 'high outflow community' and 'the community itself becomes dysfunctional and unstable, too late to realize that maternity and newborn care are linchpins for sustainable communities medically, socially, and economically.'" Furthermore, Business Insider points out warning signs for declining property values. On that list is the removal of health services, rising property taxes, homes that have been converted into multifamily dwellings, and spaces looking unkept. Is that happening here? What will become of all the new development plans? Will developers be able to sell all those planned homes in a community without basic medical care? As young families realize that basic healthcare needs are not able to be met locally, will they choose to live somewhere else? We need to not be short-sighted, but look at the long-term implications for this community. Valley Health purchased 147 acres in 2008 for $1.3 million. That land is now valued at $2.2 million. They pay no property taxes on this land. They pay no taxes at all because they are tax-exempt. Valley Health is nonprofit, but they are legally able to put millions into offshore accounts. But to remain in nonprofit standing, they must demonstrate that they provide community benefit. I don't believe that removing care for the most vulnerable members of a community would qualify as providing a community benefit. As a tax-paying woman, I would be outraged if a single dime of my tax dollars is used to help fund a hospital that I am excluded from. I request that Valley Health be responsible for 100% of the expense to install the traffic light at their entrance and to remove the warning that places a fiber limit on such a commitment. I would ask that Valley Health also be fully responsible for the estimated 3/4 of a million-dollar expense for the redundant underground electrical transmission line along Leach Run Parkway to the hospital site. If Valley Health wants to abandon the women in this community while contributing nothing in taxes, then we should not allow them to benefit from our tax dollars in any way, shape, or form. My other concerns with this rezoning application are the multiple data gaps in the Triad report. Most concerning is that Valley Health didn't even bother to complete the environmental questionnaire. In addition, Triad lists physical instructions to observations and multiple outstanding information requests, including unanswered FOIA requests from the Warren County Fire and Rescue and from the Warren County Health Department. I would like to request that these issues be addressed before this matter is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berry?
Kathy Cloud.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Kathy Close, at 1023 Med Lane. Thank you to the town council for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns for pregnant women in our community. I'm Kathy Close, Director of the Front Royal Pregnancy Center. Our center has been serving pregnant women who are most of low income since 1991. I'm here to represent the women and families in Front Royal who will be most negatively impacted by the closing of the labor and delivery at our local hospital. Our goal of the Pregnancy Center is to provide practical support so that women and children can have the opportunity to thrive. All of our support comes from individuals in the community and some churches, and that indicates to me that the community wants them to get the care they need at the time of bringing their child to birth, a critical time in the life of mom and baby. Since 2012, we've been a medical clinic offering pregnancy confirmation ultrasound. We now see over 400 women every year, and last year we did 132 ultrasound. So we're very familiar with the faces of the moms and the babies who are doing their best to prepare for bringing the child into our community. They're often, for a short time, low income, and therefore they have trouble with transportation. The local Department of Social Services has indicated that in 2017, there were at least 126 pregnant moms on Medicaid, and probably that's an under count. Our moms have overcome obstacles to come to us, they're often young, low income, and they walk to our center even in winter. Last week, in anticipation of a snowstorm, a mom with a one-month-old baby walked to our center for formula. 12% of our clients have less than a high school education, less than 5% have finished college. They're often working at entry-level paying jobs, yet they come to parenting education and childbirth education and work towards a healthy future for their children. A recently published JAMA study of 4.9 million rural births had this to say, and this is a quote, "Loss of hospital-based obstetric services in rural areas may prolong travel distances and affect access to and outcomes of care during pregnancy and at the time of childbirth." The study also said decreases in care and increases in stress that may accompany loss of nearby obstetric care could influence risk of preterm birth, which is the leading cause of infant mortality. The anxiety about getting to the hospital is already growing among our clients. We call on our clients for feedback on how having no labor and delivery unit nearby will affect them, and here are their responses. And these are quotes, "I'm not sure how I will get there without a car. It will be an hour and 15-minute drive for me, this scares me, but if I can't make it there. I'm home alone 14 hours a day with a two-year-old, neither myself nor my husband drive, and an ambulance will not transport my two-year-old with me. My last baby was cared for at Warren Memorial Hospital for a week. I will not be able to commute to Winchester this time if my new baby needs to stay for a week. I have no family in Winchester." A client due the first week of May said, "I have already had to go to Winchester Hospital several times during this pregnancy, and they seem to rush you in and rush you out, so she wonders how will they manage the additional 300 to 400 deliveries? I would be surprised if I can make it to Winchester. With my last child, I had a very short labor. I wonder who is looking out for my baby's interest?" There is no shortage of data to show that there will be a predictable negative impact. The fact that the hospital is offering classes for emergency medical services people to learn how to resuscitate newborns indicates that babies are at risk. We must ask the hospital what plan of coordination is in place to mitigate the harmful impacts that are likely to come to moms and babies that are most at risk. It's a privilege to serve these women, and now you have the opportunity to serve them by eliciting from the hospital their plan to address the impacts of less prenatal visits when the labor unit is not there and the lack of reliable plan to transport women in labor to a further away hospital on short notice, as our client asks, "Who is looking out for my baby's interest?" I urge the town council to ask the hospital to identify and plan to remedy the negative impacts that may come if there is no labor and delivery unit nearby. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Ms. Berry?
Krista Adnich.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Krista Adnich. I live in 1917 Stonewall Jackson High, here in Front Royal, Virginia. And I thank you for the opportunity and allowing me to speak this evening. I come to you and I stand before you, first, as a mother. I represent a lot of women in this community. I used to be that woman that Ms. Frost was talking about, you know, low income, high school, had a baby right in high school. You know, I used to be on that opposite side of the spectrum, okay? And I pulled myself up out of Woodstock. I went to college, thank God, and I'm doing better. I've had seven children, I've been pregnant eight times, I've had five of my children at Warren Memorial Hospital. I know so many women in our parish community, as my church community, that have labored and delivered here, and they are not able to be here this evening. I want to hear their voice. I have one friend, her name is Anna McMahon. She just recently delivered a baby. She and many other women like her were told recently that Warren Memorial Hospital is not going to be offering services, and she may have to be transported to Winchester, or she may need to make plans to have her baby there. This puts our women and their children at risk in the community. It increases the maternal mortality rate. I don't know if you know what that is, but here in America, we are ranked 14, excuse me, we have 14 per 100,000 deaths, and we are actually ranked ugly 46. That's in comparison with third world countries. It is important and imperative that we keep the standard of care for women local. We need to have that care available. I had somebody over for dinner recently, and he spoke that in his parish, there were two deaths just in the last year because of home birth. I implore Valley Health, if they would like to reconsider this decision, we need to keep this care local for women, available for women. We need to have women and their children in the highest regard, not, you know, pushed aside. We need to have them here locally, cared for in this community. I came here several years ago, I'm a transplant, I'm from Pueblo, Colorado, and my husband moved out here because we were Army. We got a job and we had a choice to live anywhere in Virginia. I chose here. I drove all over Virginia looking at homes, and I chose here. We are small business owners, I'm a member of this community, I work in healthcare, I take care of women, I take care of some women in this community or in neighboring communities, and this is a generational impact. By choosing not to take women and children, their care seriously, those women suffer generationally, and they take their business and their lives to other communities who cherish safe, affordable healthcare for women, and the means to do so by having a hospital that is concerned with care for women and their children. And I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. I hope that we can all come to the table and have better care for women.
Thank you. Ms. Berry?
Excuse me, Floyd Keener. I'm Floyd Keener, President at Warren Memorial Hospital for Valley Health. I just wanted to thank you, I want to thank council for considering our rezoning application and hope you are provided with all the information you need to hopefully approve that and act upon it favorably. I want to just talk a little bit about the hospital project. And the community itself, some facts you might not be aware of. Over the next 10 years, our population's going to increase about 10%, 9.9%. In the age 15 to 44 category, that population increase is going to be around 6.6%. Now here's a startling figure, and it has lots of implications for how we deliver our services. Now, I want to plan our services for the 10, 15, 20 years ahead. The over 65 population is going to grow by 45% over that next 10-year period. Has a lot of implications for how we design the facility, the services we plan, physicians, the professionals that we recruit to our community. We're excited about investing $100 billion into our community for a brand-new, contemporary, modern hospital that our community will be very proud of. We are changing, we continue, as all hospitals and health systems should do, continue to look at our population, continue to look at the use of our services, where people are going for our services, and try to make sure that we design those to meet the community's needs. That's what we're here for. Currently, the existing campus, we have nowhere to expand. If you've been there recently, the parking is short, it's difficult to access, it's a facility that was designed 60, 70 years ago primarily for inpatient care. We're now about 80% outpatient care. Most of our patients that come to us, between 75 and 80% of those, any given month, are outpatients, so we really need to design an expanded ambulatory presence on our new campus. And that's part of the reason why we have included a new three-story medical office building adjacent to the hospital. Our emergency department has maxed out. We currently have 12 treatment areas, we should, we right now need 18, and we want to expand potentially up to 22. The new facility would allow us to go up to that number of treatment areas. Anybody that's been to our emergency department recently knows that we're in desperate need of expansion space. Our ORs need to be modernized, and we have a lot of regular equipment, but we have small ORs, and we need to expand the size of our operating rooms. Many of the physicians that have joined our medical staff this past year have signed on to this vision. I will say, it's been a little easier than it was in prior years to recruit professionals to our community because they're very excited about the prospect of joining a health system that's about to build a new hospital. That includes orthopedic surgeons, general surgeons, heart and vascular physicians, ENT, gastroenterology, all these specialties have arrived and been recruited within the last couple of years, largely in preparation to provide a full range of services to our community going forward. They're excited about it, and so am I. The campus we want to design, we want it to be high-tech, energy-efficient, we want it to have ample parking, but yet we want to save as many trees as possible, make it as a green and inviting and a healthy environment for our patients and our families to experience. We want it to be a healing environment. We're designing it with the ultimate patient experience in mind, where they'll feel, their community will feel well-cared-for, they'll feel they have high quality and high technology, yet have a restful area to come and be part of nature on our new campus. It is a beautiful site, and we're going to do our best to maintain walking trails and walking paths within the site itself to promote wellness. Finally, with regard to the obstetrics question, it is true that we deliver less than one baby a day. Currently, right now, about 62% of Warren County mothers, expectant mothers, deliver their babies outside of Warren County. A third of those go to Winchester Medical Center. About 38% of Warren County moms currently use Warren Memorial Hospital. We know it's a sensitive issue, and we have great pride in the service that our providers, our nurses and our physicians have provided the community. They do a great job, and we're very proud of them. We have future population changes that will occur over time, new businesses coming in. If those projections change in any way, we are constantly scanning our environment to make sure that we offer services to our community as dictated by population changes and utilization patterns. And we will always be open to new ideas and offering new services for our community. Finally, I did want to stress this last very important point, and I talked about patient outcomes and preventing negative outcomes. One of the greatest things that can be done is for women to receive good prenatal care to prevent poor outcomes, for the mother and for the baby. I want you to understand that our physicians' offices are going nowhere. They will be here for all nine months of the mother's pregnancy. The only time that will change where patients have to go to Winchester is for the actual delivery itself, which averages about two days. So the thing I want to stress is that that nine-month period is very important in terms of receiving good prenatal care, and our physicians who are currently here will continue to be here to serve the community both here in Front Royal, in the lay, and in Woodstock. Those offices are going to remain. So again, I want to thank you. It took a little longer than I intended to, but I want to thank you for your consideration of our rezoning application, and I want to take the opportunity to provide you a little information about the hospital and try to answer some of your obstetrical questions.
Thank you, Ms. Keener. Ms. Berry?
Jeanne Anderson. Good evening, my name is Jeanne Anderson, and I am a resident of Belinda at 17 Court. I grew up in Fallujah County. I have lived in several other states, and I'm proud to be here as a first-time homeowner with my husband and my son, who is one years old.
You okay?
I'm okay. I just get really nervous talking in front of people. I'm here today to address the obstetric care issue that has been talked about this evening. And according to an incredible amount of journals and news sources and other studies over the last 40 years, approximately, which includes the American Medical Association, the American College of Obstetricians and gynecologists, doctors, and more, closing OB services increases premat- OB services increases premature deaths of mothers and babies, increases out of hospital deliveries, increases deliveries in hospitals without OB services, decreases prenatal visits, decreases improvement in premature outcomes, as well as the other cascading effects that were well addressed in the opening remarks of the gentleman before us. In 2013, Warren Memorial Hospital's Community Health Needs Assessment, key findings stated poor access to primary and specialty care, and again in 2016. In 2016, their Community Health Needs Assessment also indicated maternal care and infant mortality, including limited access to prenatal care. In 2017's, 2019's strategy, only education for families on not having teen pregnancies and stressing to the community that women should have jobs before children was addressed. It is a fact of life that there are young mothers out there and families that don't have good access to inner states, especially in our mountain communities, they still need access to care. Carrying and delivering and the after effects of having a child is not a trivial matter, nor is it comparable to managing diseases like diabetes or heart conditions. Regardless of the declining age population that was stated earlier, our birth rates in this community have been on the rise. And according to U.S. Census data, our community is growing faster than the state of Virginia. How do you, as a council and board of supervisors and people, people that serve this community, how can you be certain that the need for labor and delivery has not been underestimated by Valley Health? Has an unbiased third-party conducted a down study and where is it? I implore the town council to consider the additional impact of rezoning that has been stated several times. That is more than just who's going to pay for the lights and who's going to conduct the traffic accounts. And the taxpayers, they're going to pay for it. There are lives that are at stake and the impact is real. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, what is her name? Ms. Barry? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Rebecca Myers-Sell and I reside at 230 Rupert Avenue. I am a long-term resident here in Warren County and Front Royal, my group's run deep. I was born here at Warren Memorial, my mother was born there, my brother, and I just recently had my son there seven months ago. I am highly dedicated to our community. I am a registered nurse and I work here. The majority of my career has been spent here in Warren County because I want to give back to my community. And I have worked with Valley Health the entire time during my nursing career. And Valley Health actually has been supportive and helped me in the steps of my nursing career. My grandmother worked in a nursery at Warren Memorial and I now have the pleasure of doing the same. I'm currently acting as the interim director for Women's Care and Emergency Department. And with working with Valley Health, they are making great strides of improving our community needs and meeting the needs of our citizens. And currently, our nursing team and we are all excited that we are renewing our services. We are, Valley Health is bringing in orthopedic surgeons, enhancing general surgery, in addition, we're working at cardiac care and increasing that, and we're pulling in nurses and physicians to do so, enhancing that care in our community. At the same time, we are still collaborating with Valley Health, Winchester Medical Center. And just to know, the residents, the women in Warren County are still going to be receiving pre-term or prenatal care, well-in and visits, and post-prenatal care here in Warren County with Shandone Valley Obstetrical Group and Front Royal Clinic Practice still being here. In addition, with the collaboration with Winchester Medical Center, we're enhancing the services for our moms and, and our babies by enhancing those relationships with maternal fetal medicine, specialty prenatal care, as well as having a new cure available. They're looking at enhancing their midwifery services there. And my nursing team and our providers have all been in collaboration with all of the resident individuals there to make sure that our, our community and our residents receive the best care. But I just want to definitely share that with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. One more, Ms. Barry?
Three more. Thomas Sayer.
Mrs. Sayer, please state your name and address, please.
Thomas Sayer, 35, Shandone, Shortborough, 11th Towne, Front Royal. We are a group of citizens from a small town in Warren County, Virginia. We have been notified that our labor and delivery unit in the local hospital is moving to a city that is up to an hour away from the furthest points of the areas affected. We are disturbed by the trend of closing rural labor and delivery units as we are seeing in America, as reported by the Wall Street Journal, the Washington Post, Safe Birth Project, and many more. This is not what we want, our community. A brand-new 97.7 million-dollar hospital is being built without a labor and delivery unit. This is most unfortunate. The rate at which women die of pregnancy-related complications was 64% higher in rural areas than in large U.S. cities in 2015. This is a switch from the year 2000, when the rate in cities was higher, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention data analyzed by the Wall Street Journal, as reported in the Wall Street Journal. With the 64% increase in maternal mortality rates and the increase in infant deaths is because rural hospitals are closing labor and delivery units across America. If you are not aware of that, you need to be aware of that statistic. In 2014, the infant mortality rates decreased as urbanization level increased. Infant mortality in rural counties was 6.55 deaths per 1,000 births, 6% higher than in small and median urban counties, and 20% higher than in large urban counties. The infant mortality rate for small and urban counties was 14% higher than the rate in large urban counties. The United States of America is one of a few countries, including Zimbabwe and North Korea, where the mortality rate has risen since 1990, again a statistic in the Wall Street Journal, quoted in 2015. The president of Warren County Memorial Hospital got up here and stated, "The less than one birth per day is happening in Warren County Memorial Hospital." That's not true. I have statistics here that show the birth rate in Warren County and Warren Memorial Hospital. The birth rate in Warren County Memorial Hospital was over 400 births per day from the years, well, in the last, well, in the year 2010, 2011, almost 2012, 2013, 14, and 15. There were more births than what he just got up here and stated. Now we repeat that. In the year 2010, 11, 12, definitely 14 and 15, was a little downturn in the year 2013, there were either more than 400 births at Warren Memorial Hospital or slightly less, but there was more than 365. And I read in the newspaper, it was on a quote from somebody that was representing Warren, the, the hospital, was saying that, that the labor unit, the delivery unit is profitable. So this is not something that they're losing money on. And also that those births and resident births in Warren County are over 400 a year, and that sometimes they've been over 500 a year. And I submit to you, that with a new hospital, a lot of people would have more faith in the care and would come. My wife, since we lived here, we had two babies here and we had a great time. Please don't sell out Front Royal. Also, I've heard from a reason that they've said that they're closing because, well, everybody's leaving and not coming. Well, if you tell people that the labor and delivery unit's closing, of course, they're going to get the resume out and nobody's going to come in because it's going to be closing down. And I, I, I just think that you guys, you ran for town council, you going to sell it out, Gary Gillespie? Bill Silo can sell out Front Royal? Jeanne Tewalk? Jacob Miesa? Christopher Morrison? You'll sell out Front Royal?
Please state your name and address, please.
Yeah, Stephen Schlesinger, 8th West Prospect Street. So I just want to say shame to Valley Health, shame to them for removing that. And just to let you guys know, I am about to have a baby in less than two months. By then, it'll be closed. May 29th is our delivery date. But one of the things that really disturbs me is I was looking at the Valley Health website and in that it says neighborhood. That's one of the things that they say is neighborhood. Me going to Winchester is not the neighborhood. Couple other things is that, now, now I just didn't know this, but $100 million for a hospital, that's, that's fantastic. That's great for Front Royal, that's great for everyone. But without that labor and delivery room, that's bad for, for a lot of people, even people like me, even though it might be, you know, five, six years down the road, whatever it might be. I do think they needed a labor and delivery room. I'm a guy that needs it, my wife needs it. I think it would be great for everyone. And also, it's a small town, who wants to be born in Winchester, you know what I mean? So that, no, that's just saying, shame, you know, once again, shame on the Valley Health people for, for not being responsible in the community. Now, as far as this zoning thing, you know, I, I say you guys, you know, rezonate, that's fine, you know, do what you guys gotta do as a council mother. But at least make them, make them keep the labor and delivery area up. So I guess the same.
Thank you so much. Ms. Barry?
And our last one to sign up, I'm sorry, I cannot read your writing, your first name's Mark. Thank you, sir.
You're not the first one who couldn't read my writing.
Sorry.
My name is Mark Merrill, I'm the president and CEO of Valley Health System. I live on Sullivan Drive in Winchester, Virginia. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be with you this evening and thank you for your services to this community. The availability of high-quality health care, hopefully weekly at Valley Health, is an important asset to any community. Valley Health and its members have been serving the northern Shenandoah Valley for over 100 years. And we were pleased in 1993 when Warren Memorial Hospital joined Winchester Medical Center to create what is now a Valley Health System. We are also pleased to be announcing that we're spending roughly $100 million to invest in this community to serve the residents now and for the future. We believe and expect that a new hospital will positively impact the lives of the people in Warren County. It will support the community's efforts to attract new businesses, it will welcome new residents, we believe it will stimulate economic vitality, and most important, we believe it will provide needed health and medical services to residents and visitors to Warren County. Warren County and Front Royal have invested heavily in schools, bridges, roads, and housing. Weekly, that a new contemporary facility has potential to further support the growth this community has already made. Since Warren Memorial Hospital joined Valley Health in 1993, we have invested over $80 million in the Front Royal community. We created Len Care Center on the campus of Warren Memorial Hospital. We invested in a new medical office building on Commerce Street at roughly $10 million. We renovated the emergency department, we put $40 million in equipment. Recently this year, we opened a new cardiac catheterization laboratory to serve patients with coronary disease. We continue to provide a high degree of community benefit to those individuals who are without needs. Warren community, Warren Memorial Hospital has contributed over $6 million per year in IRS-designated community benefit since 2012, $6 million per year. If you add on top of that the discounts that we provide to Medicaid beneficiaries which do not pay us our costs, Warren's commitment to the community has exceeded $16 million per year every year since 2012. We're proud and committed to this community. And our goal is to provide an exceptional patient experience for those patients we have the privilege to serve, for Warren County and for Front Royal. As you all know, healthcare today is very dynamic and is evolving. Our highly skilled physicians seek to practice in a contemporary space, as Mr. Heeder described, in terms of contemporary operating theaters, contemporary emergency departments, cath labs. We seek to provide all private rooms for the residents who will come to Front Royal, to Warren Memorial Hospital. Over the last 20 years, inpatient admissions and hospital length of stays have decreased, as Mr. Heeder remarked. More and more services on outpatient basis. The current campus is inconsistent to meet the needs of the growing population and is not designed for 21st century care. The physical plant, the entrances, the parking, the access, the limited number of private rooms, the operating rooms, the size of the ED are out of date and need to be invested in. The demand for outpatient services, better access to care and convenience, and prevention and wellness are important. Warren Memorial Hospital has served this community very well for 71 years and we anticipate serving it equally well for the next 70 years. We are proud of the A safety score that Warren has received in 2015, 2016, and 17. Our Len Care Center has been recognized as the center of excellence for long-term care residents. And Warren was recently recognized by the Joint Commission as a top performer in some quality metrics. Finally, as we, as we all know, healthcare policy and payments are dynamic and are changing every month or every year, both in Washington and in the Commonwealth of Virginia. As these resources become more constrained, we have responsibility to use our resources to help our system to serve the broader geographic community. We need to position ourselves in Warren to provide, to provide for the future and respond to changes in payment and delivery. And we also need to make sure our resources are devoted to serve the greatest population we can serve. So we look forward to working with the county and the city to advance the new Warren Memorial Hospital and we hope that you can seriously approve our request for the zoning application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everybody, Ms. Barry?
It was, thank you.
The committee is now closed. Gentlemen, your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council affirm on its first reading of rezoning applications submitted by Valley Engineering on behalf of Valley Health for the conditional rezoning of approximately 140 centers from RS Suburban Residential District and A1 Agricultural and Space Preservation District to MCD Minstee Use Campus Development District for future hospital, medical office, and accessory uses, as shown in concept plan and progress presented.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Councilmember, Marson.
Yeah. Okay. So I think this is a good opportunity to speak about what was mostly spoken tonight. I think it's, anyway, so as I was saying, what was mostly spoken tonight rather than what's actually before us to vote, I don't know if we're going to get another opportunity. So the thing about crisis is it either brings people together or it tears them apart. I like to see this crisis bring the community together. But that being said, but that being said, we have to come up with a viable solution that will allow for those in this community to receive adequate care without a hardship. We also need to provide a, we also need to provide a community in which Valley Health can profit. That is the compromise. I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything in regards to that compromise. I have heard of several discussions, I haven't heard of any tangible... I haven't heard of any tangible results. I think the members of the community that came tonight, ten people in total, seven of which oppose, all of the community, three in which are favor, all of which are employees, are looking for results. So we're going to have to vote tonight about zoning. I don't want people to misread how the vote goes in terms of zoning. However, dialogue certainly needs to take place about what was presented tonight outside of the agenda item. And I, I just encourage my, my council members to take that into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of things. First and foremost, I want to urge our representatives here from Valley Health to hear our citizens when it comes to this issue. I also think that the decision to deny OB-GYN services and, and the labor and delivery services of the new hospital is a mistake. It's short-sighted. I think it does hurt our community. However, I also want to go on the record and before everyone here is to explain why I'm in a bind as far as the vote goes here this evening. What's before us is a rezoning application, and Virginia Code is very specific about how we have to proceed on this. Conditional zoning is regulated by Virginia Code, Section 15.2. There's a whole section in there, several chapters on it. Conditional rezoning has to be done on the other side of the table. Basically, we have to look at this issue tonight as to whether or not the applicants, the application is in conformity with the zone purpose of Mixed-Use Campus District. Mr. Sayer knows this. He was on town council when we dealt with the proffers question, when we brought the Front Royal Limited Partnership Section into the town through boundary adjustment with the county. It would be a violation of the Virginia Code to sit up here and say, I'm not going to vote in favor of this zoning application until Valley Health allows, does something positive on that proffer side. Proffers must be freely given under Virginia law. So while I understand and hear everything that our citizens have turned out here to say tonight, I can't find anything in the, either in the proffers, or, I mean, in the, in the application, or in any of the reports that are in that packet that finds it to be out of conformity with the mixed-use district. So I will be voting in favor of this tonight, even though I really do wish that Valley Health would listen to our citizens and their concerns.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I guess I was the one that brought up a lot of the issues before our work sessions in regards to the rezoning, and I'm still pretty much in favor of the rezoning. But the problem that I had to have is the fact that we are bound by state law to make decisions, and that goes above our heads to the state legislating body. And so when Mr. Colley refers to that, we don't have any choice but to accept the application on its own merits, and that merits fit our standards, and we have no opportunity, no other opportunity except to actually either vote for or against. As far as voting against it because of the, of the BYGN, I think it's it, you know, I'm getting older and I don't have children, my grandchildren are in college too, so. But anyway, whatever we're going to call it tonight, the issue is here tonight, and I would like to ask the hospital and the people that are in charge, and I know some of them, I know Mr. Heeter very well, and I know others, but I would like for you to reconsider some of these issues here tonight because, you know, this is our community. This is, it depends on the people that came and spoke and told us exactly how they feel, and I'm sure there's many others in Front Royal that feel the same way. And I know my two children were born here in Front Royal at the Warren Memorial Hospital many years ago, and we got very good service, and I'd like to see our service continue if we can. But based on that tonight, and based on the information that we have received, then we're going to have to, at least I am, I'm going to have to vote in positive for this motion tonight to allow them to reconstruct this building out of one hundred forty-seven acres as a rezoning request. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was a council. I too will be voting yes for the rezoning. I would like to ask Valley Health to also reconsider this, but the reason for my vote tonight is strictly under the Virginia Code. I think, yeah.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Ms. Barry, roll call, please.
Councilman Colley?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Messa?
Yes.
Councilman Morrison?
Yes.
Councilman Siloak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tewalk?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a two-minute recess just to let everybody, if you want, they get one. So go ahead. Not.